Good evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask you to remain standing to keep in mind our troops that are in harms way, our prisoners of war, our killed in action, our missing in action, for the children who were separated from their parents, all those that are suffering from these terrible wars, and any personal intentions you may have. Thank you very much. And again, good evening and welcome here and welcome to our viewing audience. We're going to start with our agenda will be for consideration of the November 14th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Commissioners, you have copies of those minutes. You've had an opportunity to review them. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Commissioners. First item on our agenda is subdivision, Robert Marquis. I hope I said that right. Okay. 261 Lower Morrisville Road, Falsington, PA, requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval in order to create two lots on a property located at 1144 Grebe Avenue, Bristol, tax parcel number 5-74-258, in an R-2 residential zone District of Bristol Township. Good evening.
Good evening. Mike McGinnis here tonight on behalf of Bob Marquis. Mr. Marquis is with me as well and happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission might have. The subject property is located at 1144 Grebe Avenue. It is a minor subdivision and presently consists of one lot right here, which is approximately 14,000 square feet. The existing home, and for conversation purposes this night, we're going to describe it as Lot 1 right here. It is located, as you can see with what I'm depicting, existing dwelling with a driveway and then a rear garage. We are requesting permission to move forward with the minor subdivision to create what we're labeling as Lot 2 in the area that I'm highlighting for the Planning Commission. We attended the zoning hearing board twice on this. The first reason was we needed a couple dimensional variances to facilitate the subdivision. The second time we attended was because the first plan didn't depict the end of the garage and where we were proposing the lot line to be created. The existing garage, which we're looking to retain at the property is approximately 3.27 feet from the property line and it requires a five-foot side yard setback. Therefore, we went back to the zoning hearing board and had ratification for the garage to remain in that location pursuant to the subdivision. This site is particularly odd if you are looking at it from Grebe Avenue. I don't know if any of the members of the Planning Commission had the opportunity to drive by, but there is already to the western portion, a fence which functionally bisects the property. So if you happen to be on site looking at the property, you would already assume that this was a second lot. But it's not. And Mr. Marquis, for reasons again that he can detail, is looking to create the additional lot which he's not planning on constructing a home on in the immediate near future. That was a point of conversation when we attended the zoning hearing board. When we originally went to the ZHB, we had variances that would again allow the subdivision, but in terms of Lot 2, we discussed with the zoning hearing board how there were no present intentions to build a single-family dwelling there, but we were asking for one-dimensional variance relating to Lot 2. And one of the comments that was raised and then it was discussed was, well, why are you depicting a potential footprint of a home you're not intending to develop in the near term, which we took into consideration. We withdrew that variance request. And then when we went forward with the subdivision, we wiped the structural improvement that was proposed to just create the minor subdivision, which my understanding in discussing with Kurt and Samantha and Bob is a little bit different than how Bristol normally processes these things. We wanted to make sure that we were trying to do this correctly. I will note, and you can see with the building envelope, that's outlined for Lot 2, there is a buildable envelope. I know that the concern typically when you're looking at a subdivision that doesn't have a present improvement that is proposed as part of the development, are we creating a lot that isn't buildable? And then that's giving cause to someone basically to have a manufactured hardship to go back to the zoning hearing board to say, well, hey, I can do whatever I want on this property because there's a hardship. I shut that off somehow. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Bryce gave me like a gimmicky clicker to bring to the meeting. And in this case, that's not true, right? So we have a clear buildable lot in the future. When somebody looks to build a single-family home, obviously they're going to have to comply with the township regs and Gilmore's going to have to review it for stormwater management and those sorts of things. But we're not creating a lot that just doesn't have the possibility for construction. So otherwise, what we're doing, I think, is fairly straightforward. The waiver requests that we have that we can walk through are basically all correlated to the fact that there's no present intention to develop the site and everything else that is outlined in the Gilmore and Associates Review Letter is a will comply. So I don't know if there's any questions at the outset or if I could just go right into the waivers and then we can open it up for comments and questions. I'm happy to do that.
Commissioners, are there any questions? If not, we can go right through the waiver request letter.
Great, thank you. So the initial application and the initial review that was done outlined, I think it was six waivers. We've since updated that to have nine waiver requests, which have been provided to the township. The first waiver request is from 17735 to not require cartway widening, curbs, or sidewalks along the property frontage, which again, along with the narrative that we have tonight, it's we're seeking to just maintain the existing conditions as they're currently depicted, which then dovetails into some of the additional waivers in a second. But 17740.C is to allow a driveway within 40 feet of the intersection of corner lots. A waiver from 17740.F to allow a minimum width of a driveway to be less than nine feet for Lot 1, which again, for Lot 1 is here. It is a existing condition on site regarding the driveway width. 17743.A, a waiver from the requirement that sidewalks be provided on one side of all budding streets. There are no sidewalks, as I understand it, along the frontage or adjacent streets. 17745.A from the requirement that curbs be provided on one side of all budding streets. Again, the same note as we previously had. A waiver from 17751A1A from the requirement for street trees along both sides of streets. And again, we're not proposing any development and we're seeking permission to maintain the existing conditions on site. A waiver from 17793A1 regarding to the plan scale at 1 inch equals 50 feet. And we have 1 equals 20 feet. An existing conditions waiver from 17793 that would allow us to not have to provide location names, width of streets, et cetera, and other existing features within 200 feet because we're not proposing to develop in a way that would require production of those existing features. And then finally, a waiver from 17793C6, which is a waiver from the requirement that appropriate contours appear on the plan in two to five-foot intervals with sufficient details to show core structure, capacity of drainage facilities, et cetera. And again, we're not altering the site right now. So we're asking for permission to not go through with that level of associated engineering that would otherwise be anticipated when you had development. So those are our waiver requests. And again, Mr. Marquis is present if you have any questions of him. Thank you.
Bob, you have anything? Samantha? Commissioners, do you have any comments, questions? Comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to recommend the council to give preliminary and final subdivision approval in order to create two lots on the property located at 1144 Grebe Ave., Bristol, tax parcel number 5-74-258, in an R2 residentially zoned District of Bristol Township, and also grant the waivers in the December 5th letter from Begley, Carlin, and Mandio.
Very good.
And everything else is a will comply?
That is correct, yes.
So I have a motion and I have a second. I mean, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you very much. I'm getting ahead of myself. It's Tuesday. I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next item on our agenda is zoning map amendment petitions. First is Oak Ridge Investment 7998 New Falls Road, Levittown, requesting a zoning change from PO Professional Office to C-Commercial in order to use the property in the future for commercial purposes located at Levittown Parkway and a Magnolia Turn, Levittown, tax parcel number 5-46-29.
Good evening. Mike McGinnis again.
Back again?
Yes, sir. On behalf of Oak Ridge Investments, Inc., the property that is before you for consideration with the zoning request, as you can see, is located near the intersection of New Falls and Levittown Parkway. For specificity, this map is from the county GIS map. We pulled it with the surrounding zoning districts for clarity and then the parcel that is before you is highlighted in green and as you can see is zoned PO, which is Professional Office Commercial District. The tax parcel number is 5-46-229 and it is next to, I believe this is the Walgreens right here. Property itself is a bit over half an acre. We are here to request permission again to move forward to change the underlying zoning to commercial. So essentially right here, we would ask this to be commercial. And the reason for this is very simple. My client, I have Mr. Giffman here and I also have Larry Young here, who's working with Mr. Giffman, has had this property listed with a very reputable commercial retail broker for nine years and has had absolutely no bites on the property. I think years ago, there was a conversation with the township, which predated my representation of Oak Ridge to potentially have residential here. That was not something four or five years ago that the township seemed particularly interested in. But if you look at the PO Professional Office Commercial District uses permitted by right, they're fairly constricting, daycare center, public park, and then you have things like office, primarily office, medical office. And as you can imagine, if there was trouble before 2020 getting someone to come in and build based upon office, that market has just completely disappeared right now. So we do not know, you know, being very candid, who or what commercial user we could market this to, to lease, but at least we have a fighting chance if it's own commercial. It is in an area that I think commercial is appropriate. And if we're changing the zoning for spot zoning reasons, we, and that's going to be relevant for the next presentation, you know, it has to be a nearby or almost abutting zoning. So if we're not changing it to residential, PO is sort of on an island unto itself here. You have commercial, you have commercial. So we're asking permission to have this rezoned to commercial and then we're going to redouble our efforts to have it listed. Hopefully, with the opportunity, six months, nine months, whatever it is down the road, to be back in front of you with some, you know, hey, this is good news. We have a viable business that would be a benefit to the township here. Unfortunately, if it's not changed, I just, I don't know what we're going to do with the site. So that's it. There's nothing else intended right now and we're happy to answer any questions, feedback that the Planning Commission might have.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay. Bob? Sam? Kurt? Okay. Any questions from the audience? Okay. And I could just take a vote on this, right Kurt? Okay. Well, Commissioners, you've heard the presentation. Haven't heard of any comments, questions, or objections or whatever. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. To recommend to council the zoning map amendment petition for Oak Ridge Investments, 7998 New Falls Road, Levittown, requesting a zoning change from PO Professional Office to C-Commercial in order to use the property in the future for commercial purposes located at Levittown Parkway and Magnolia Turn, Levittown, tax parcel number 5-46-229.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is zoning map amendment petition for JRZ LLC for 500 Coventry Avenue, Freudon, requesting a zoning change for properties at 612 Coventry Avenue, tax parcel that number 5-008-177 from C-Commercial to R3 Residential, and 607 Second Avenue, tax parcel number 5-008-176 from R-3 Residential to Commercial.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mike. You're getting a familiar face here.
Generously scheduled all at once.
Okay.
I don't think this is going to be quite as short as the first two, so you got to bear with me here.
That's what we're here for.
I, I'm going to, I understand for scheduling purposes, we have the rezoning first. It's always challenging to discuss the rezoning without an explanation as to the underlying development. This in particular is extra complicated for reasons that you'll see in a second. So if you will, don't mind indulging me at the outset. I'm going to try to explain what you're looking at and why we are requesting, what we're requesting from a zoning standpoint, and then that's going to be tied into the development of this. And it will, I think, as the outline, hopefully I can set the table for it. And then as Larry explains, the improvements, it all sort of come together before we get to the waivers and the review letters. So we are here for JRZ LLC and Rich Zober is with us as well. As I noted, the plan that's before you was prepared by Tri-State and I have Larry Young with me. We appeared at the zoning hearing board back in April to seek variances that would facilitate this development. We were fortunate enough to receive those variances and similar to what I'm about to do, we walked through everything best we could with the zoning hearing board because there are multiple parcels and many uses that exist over the two parcels. And with zoning, that is like a Frankenstein monster here. So JRZ owns two parcels, which are in front of you. And Larry's gonna, I'm going to be very, there you go. Larry, you can highlight this while I talk about them.
There's one parcel.
Okay.
And the other one's kind of L-shaped.
Right, right there, yes. And they are contiguous to each other. The one is a approximately third of an acre property at 612 Coventry. And the adjacent parcel that Larry just mentioned is at 607 Second Avenue. It's elongated, it's approximately .83 acres. The zoning, as I noted, is backwards. So the operation on 607 Second Avenue is commercial. There's outdoor parking on the corner. And then along Second Avenue, there are other industrial, commercial operations, Micah Precision's still in R&amp;D Automotive, and that zoned residential. But then there's a residential, it's own commercial, I mean, it's just all entwined and backwards. Correct. And we couldn't just change the zoning to facilitate what we're going to get to in a second, which is two, three-unit townhomes. The reason for that, which I just discussed briefly with the last application, is you have to look from a spot zoning standpoint at the surrounding area. We can't just pick a zoning district out of the sky and put it in here because it wouldn't work. So the zoning districts that allow townhomes, there's nothing close enough for us to stand up in front of you in good faith and say, hey, just zone this and I can build townhomes by right, which we discussed with the zoning hearing board. Similarly, even though for the industrial uses, M1 is probably best. Honestly, there's nothing here. We couldn't do anything to fix it other than saying part of the application is going to make residential zoning as close as we can for residential uses and we're going to take away the residential zoning for the commercial industrial uses and make that commercial. So even though, again, it is an imperfect, inexact fit, it is 90% of the way there instead of right now, which is 0% of the way there. So when this was originally discussed, I don't know, like 18 months ago, the reason for the staff meeting at that time was Rich and JRZ, I think through Alan Toadvine in our office, had appeared in front of the zoning hearing board back in 2022 with a much worse version of this plan, to be candid, and gotten denied. We believe that this development is significantly better for this corner in the township than what's there for reasons that we'll discuss. We're deleting multiple uses, we're cleaning it up. There's going to be nice new homes here, we're fixing the zoning, but we needed to figure out a way to do it appropriately. So we met with Gilmore and I think Bob, I think you were probably present and Randy was present and Larry worked with Gilmore and we sort of came up with the version of the plan that substantially, this version of the plan which is before you for consideration. So we are with this application. As I said, we're building maybe, Larry, is your next page the proposed improvements?
Two more.
Two more. Bob, that'll help at this point because this is existing features. We're deleting residential uses. We're adding, you can see the cluster of townhomes. And again, I, we'll answer questions. I'll have Larry go through it in a way that is more cogent than what I'm going to say. But you can see the proposed three-unit townhomes, the proposed three-unit townhomes. We're removing uses on this site. We're cleaning up this corner in a way that is a market improvement. We had modified some of our access in a way that Larry can touch on from the version that was originally submitted to the zoning hearing board for consideration back in '22 before we revised it for this version of the plan that's there in '23. I think at the end of the day, the 20,000-foot overview is we're taking kind of a, two properties that are complex. We're improving the zoning. We're removing the, in one area, the poor-looking outdoor storage of vehicles and other materials. We're deleting residential homes that are in poor condition that are on site. We're changing the lot lines in a way that makes infinitely more sense here. And then the end of the day, you're going to have a much cleaner, clearer commercial industrial operation on a portion and then six nice new residential units. So I think the project itself in terms of the impact is not huge, but we think the small improvement at the end of the day is going to be a much better situation for any of the residences in this area or any of the surrounding businesses. I think rather than just belabor it anymore, Larry, if you can just go through what's depicted and then we can dive into more specifics and then the waivers, that'll help.
Like Mike.
And good evening. Could you identify yourself?
Larry Young from Tri-State Engineers.
Thank you, Larry.
As Mike said, the goal was to rezone this commercial property to R3. This was already R3. So this whole piece is now becoming R3 with the townhouse use A3 on it. The improvements on this lot is you'll have six units, six townhouse units, a net gain of four because we're taking away two residential houses on the properties. So there's really only four more dwelling units at that point. We, we put a driveway, a shared parking area that all the, the six units will share here. There will be an underground infiltration basin underneath the parking lot. We take access from Second Avenue because there's a lot of issues with Coventry Avenue. It's only 16 feet wide. There's a lot of slopes coming off this property, steep slopes. That's one of the reasons why we were denied at the zoning hearing board the first time was we had one of these units and we had access to Coventry Road. So we got denied. So we put our heads together with the township staff and put a shared parking on the lots, which in HIA will maintain. The access will be Second Street, Second Avenue. As far as the bottom property, it's going to, one of the houses that is over here is going to be removed. There's another house right here that's going to be removed. The auto repair is going to remain and the machine shop is going to remain. And what we did was we put a, there was kind of a hodgepodge of parking all over the site, even at the corner of the building here, things like that. There's a very short distance from the building to the road on Second Ave., but we were proposing a parking lot over here in addition to this driveway for the parking. One of the variances that we got was for parking. There is an underground basin, infiltration basin under this parking lot as well. So I believe the parking lots will be lit. They have stormwater, you know, based on your ordinance, has handicap parking and it's going to be public water and sewer served, so.
Added, stay up, but yeah, added parking here on the site, which we can facilitate by removal of the residential units, probably.
And where that residential unit is, that's part of the old R3 that you're removing? And where that residential unit is, that's part of the old R three that you're removing?
Right now, this is, right, this is all.
If you skipped to the next slide. This is the existing conditions.
Right.
So, you can see, here's, here's, here's the, whoops. Here's the existing dwelling.
Okay.
Going to be removed.
And here's the other one.
And here's the other one.
And they're both the R three now?
They're, they're R three, but they're in need of repair, they're falling down, actually.
Yeah, m- mixed on a lot that has the machine shop and the automotive repair. So by removing the dwelling here, we're able to expand the, the parking fairly significantly, which will then have the, we think, the, the side effect of removing any of the vehicles that have been parking either by Second Ave or by Magnolia. So you get them off the street, you delete two of the residential uses, you keep the two industrial, commercial uses that are there. I, and I would assume, Larry, based on stormwater, there's probably a fairly significant improvement with the stormwater management here post-development. And then this site has been, uh, a mess, uh, in terms of some of the commercial storage, I guess, that I'll, I'll call it, that gets immediately removed, and then it gets developed as part of the, the two, three-unit townhome clusters, with again, uh, the parking and stormwater management that we control. And then the end of the day, you have the, the R three zoning, and then the commercial zoning, which is consistent with the area. So, that's the, again, the big, the big picture.
Alright, thank you.
What we're trying to do.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the presentation, um, any comments, questions? Bob, Sam, Kurt?
We just wanted to clarify, uh, the waiver, the, the ordinance has requirement to widen the road of Coventry to the twenty-six foot, uh, cartway width. It's currently sixteen feet in front of the property. There's a waiver being requested from road widening. The traffic engineer's review letter recommended the road be widened to at least the width of Coventry on the western leg of Coventry away from the site. Do you have any clarification on discussions with Matt Johnston since his letter, is there any?
We, we didn't have discussions, but I know through the zoning hearing board, um, we tried to limit the access there. If, if you look at the right-of-way, that road is not centered, Coventry is not centered in the right-of-way. It's all the way to the Zober property side. So widening would bring in steep slopes, uh, retaining walls. The utility poles are just off the, um, the, uh, pavement on ours, on the Zober side. So really, the widening has to be done on the railroad side, if anything.
So you're saying, uh, the expense of widening the road is compounded by existing, you're saying there's utility?
Conditions.
Utility poles would have to get?
Yep.
Just, just because, yeah, I see that there's, there's some, I mean, if it's at sixteen feet and the recommendation was to make it to the width of west area of Coventry, it'd be like a five, six-foot road widening. Um, you know, I guess excavating around the poles, there's at least maybe one or two poles that would likely have to get reset.
They would have to be removed and, and placed back further, which is on private property at that point.
That would be the railroad property, right?
Now, if we, if we, well, we, we're only responsible to widen on our side at this point. And that's where all the physical impediments are on our side.
Which was also part of the reason for the pivot as part of the design from Coventry on to Second.
That's why, that's why we took access to Second, Second Avenue.
We lost the picture. Here we go.
I mean, if I could suggest for purposes of this evening, since that's just one waiver, um, we're probably, what, gonna make a resubmission before council? I would, I don't know, I mean, we can communicate, but I would be fine with, uh, with that particular waiver, with a recommendation of basically deferral to Larry and Gilmore and Panoni for us to collaborate and come to a consensus before council on that issue.
Yeah, and we apologize, usually we have this worked out with, um, traffic engineering with the applicants ahead of time. It's just something that we kind of realized that we hadn't fully scrubbed. Um, so I think to close the gap between traffic engineer's review and the waiver requests, if it just be conditioned that, um, that it be worked out with the traffic engineer prior to going to council, um, I think that would probably give us cover through tonight. Uh, if you're so inclined to move ahead with granting the recommendation of approval, maybe caveat it with that.
Thanks, Kurt. So commissioners, you've heard this discussion, and, um, and I'm glad to see you're trying to figure a way to make this kind of all work, as we'd like to always see things work. Um, so, um, are there any questions from the commissioners?
I have a question. So, that waiver though, um, am I correct, that is part of the subdivision land development? Kurt? The waiver that you were discussing, that isn't part of the zoning map amendment, right? That was part of the subdivision, so would be in the subdivision discussion then?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
It wouldn't affect the zoning map change?
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, we, uh, intermingled those for, just for clarity to try to explain what we're doing and why.
Commissioners, anybody else have any questions or comments? Bob, Sam, Kurt? Anyone from the audience?
John, just to clarify, you have two motions coming, one for the zoning change and the one for the subdivision.
Subdivision is the second one. Wait, we're just, right now, we're just doing the, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. On the zoning map amendment petition, JRZ LLC five hundred Coventry Avenue Croydon, requesting a zoning change for properties at sixteen twelve Coventry Avenue, tax parcel number five dash zero zero eight dash one seven seven, from C Commercial to R three Residential. And then six oh seven Second Avenue, tax parcel number five dash oh oh eight dash one seven six, to go from R three Residential to C Commercial. And we would recommend to council for that zoning map amendment change.
And excuse me for a second.
Six twelve.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and second, any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck, John. The next item on our agenda is subdivision land development for JRC LLC five hundred Coventry Ave. Croydon requesting preliminary and final land development approval in order to construct two, three-unit, six units total, single-family attached dwellings, townhouses on the properties located at six one two Coventry Ave, tax parcel number five dash zero zero eight dash one seven seven, and then six oh seven Second Ave, tax parcel number five dash zero zero eight dash one seven six, Croydon.
The reruns, mate.
Yeah.
Hi, Mike.
Hello.
You're like a bad penny, man, you're shelling up all over the place here. Okay.
Good evening again, so, uh, again, I, I won't belabor this, we, we discussed this at length. What I would suggest is, uh, if Larry and I can just go through the waivers that we're requesting at this point, uh, you should have, I believe, in your packet, the Tri-State August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three waiver request letter. Uh, and I will note that there is, there are two additional waivers that we will be requesting in addition to what is on the sheet. And then Larry, if you don't mind jumping back up here when you get a second. Uh, and I will, again, for clarity, just highlight that on this August thirtieth letter, the second waiver request is what we had our conversation about a few minutes ago. Um, so I have that as a little star here in terms of however the planning commission would be inclined to frame that were agreeable to, you know, work with the township and Gilmore and Panoni.
And Mike, if you'll excuse me for a minute, because I might have, I might have overstepped the, overs, over, missed something. Kurt, do I need to read the ordinances for each one of these things? Or we just enter them into the record?
You're asking whether or not the applicant should run through the section of the ordinance and discuss each waiver?
Uh, not so much that, as much as the ordinance, things that I have in front of me.
No, you don't need to go, no, certainly not, no.
We just enter them into the record.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving right along, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Um, one seventy, so referencing again the Tri-State letter, the first waiver we have identified is the one seventy-seven fourteen E for preliminary final submission in tandem for land development. Uh, I'm gonna table further conversation for one seventy-seven thirty-five A, which is number two, which is the cartway width. Uh, we also have identified as number three, one seventy-seven thirty-five A, one seventy-seven forty-three A, which is, uh, the sidewalk waiver requests relating to the lack of sidewalks on Coventry, Second, and Magnolia avenues. We have waiver requests, uh, that we've delineated as item four, uh, one seventy-seven thirty-five A, forty-five A, and sixty-seven A from providing curbing along all budding streets. Um, Larry, if you can just highlight that quickly, your note about the parking lot, curbing on Lot Seven tying into existing curbing along the frontage, and then, uh, this is a storm, really a stormwater request, right, in terms of the flow?
Well, it, it's the only curbing that exists.
If you would like to go back up to the microphone, please.
The, the only, the only curbing that exists is right here on Magnolia for a length. Cedar has some curbing, and right at the corner where Zober Industries, i- it stops at the radius. So there is no other curb anywhere around that area.
And Larry, can you highlight on one, I'm sorry, the next waiver is item five, one seventy-seven forty-one C, and that relates to, uh, basically how we are outlining our parking from an ADA standpoint. And just, can you show, you said because of the way the site is designed in order to provide that, uh, the handicap space?
Here, here's, uh, thi- this is the perpendicular parking on a roadway that we're looking at. We have two spaces. The handicap was put there because the businesses, the doors are out front here to enter the businesses. So that was the closest place we could put the handicap ramp at that point.
Okay. And then one seventy-seven forty-one F relates to our requirement of having no less than fifteen feet of open space between a curb line and any uncovered parking area in the outside wall of the nearest building, and be, yeah, because of our.
That happens right here.
Right.
Right here, and
The corner there, yeah.
This, this parking space in relationship to the gar- garage here.
Okay. Um, one seventy-seven forty-seven H is, uh, the waiver request to not have an excessively deep lot with respect to width or excessively irregular in shape, obviously for general planning purposes. Um, we are sort of violating that because of how we're constructing the properties in fee with the, the elongated lots, correct?
It's all the township lot, the townhouse lots
Right.
up there that are very narrow and long.
Right. Uh, and, but again, the existing lot, uh, probably is the most violating of that ordinance that I've ever seen. So, um, one seventy-seven forty-eight D three is comment eight, which is grading within five feet of a property line. Um, and then if you just can depict where that is, and you're noting that that's gonna be staked and pointed out before that occurs, correct?
That, that occurs right along this parking lot line and right along the last townhouse.
Okay, and that allows the construction of the, the parking spaces to facilitate the industrial uses there. Uh, one seventy-seven forty-nine A is item nine, which relates to minimum width of easements of twenty feet, and we have ten feet because of the layout, and you have a note that says this is ample room for maintenance to occur since the storm sewers are not deep. Can you just, I know there's gonna be an association, can you just explain that briefly, Larry?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the plan up that shows the actual easements, but it's around this storm sewer, this storm sewer, and right here, this storm sewer. We had to put easements around them because although Mr. Zober will own all these lots, um, the HOA is gonna maintain them, so they have to have a right to go on to the properties, and especially in the future, if he ever sold a property, they would have easements on them.
Okay, and then one seventy-seven fifty-five L three, can you explain that to the planning commission? It says maximum width of driveways and sidewalk openings measured at the street lot line shall be thirty-five feet, minimum width shall be twenty feet. And then we have a note, the proposed driveway located on Magnolia Avenue is forty-three point nine two feet, and that relates to a curb line radius that we've got depicted on the plans. And then we have a notation regarding two spaces on Second Avenue being fifty-five feet, again related to the curb line radius.
Bob, can you move that plan up to the top? Yeah, so one of them is right here. That's because there's a, um, commercial use, and you need, uh, the, actually, put the, put the plan before it, and then move it all the way down to the bottom there. So right here, this is, this is where it occurs that it's greater than thirty-five feet because this is a commercial lot and it, it, uh, has a twenty-five foot radius on here. So that makes it at the street line, it's wider than what the ordinance requires.
Okay, and then our last two waivers in your letter that we've got identified as number eleven and number twelve are the plan scale, um, which we have at one equals twenty and one equals thirty versus the one equals fifty or one equals one hundred requirement, and then in existing features or existing conditions, and you have provided, um, an aerial in conjunction with the application, correct?
Yeah, on sheet sixteen.
Okay. The last item that, uh, I would note for the planning commission, perhaps with a suggestion, um, if I could, that we handle it similarly to how we're handling the cartway width, because I think they're sort of interconnected. So if you go to the Gilmore and Associates review letter dated October twelfth and flip to page five, items twelve and thirteen relate to items 12 and 13 relate to street trees. And part of our analysis regarding planning of street trees relates to the embankment, the steep embankment on Coventry, which Larry highlighted regarding the widening as well, as well as the location of existing utilities. So I think for purposes of this evening's conversation, again, if the planning commission is comfortable with it, this, I think this is sort of all tied in together with this analysis on Coventry and the sloping and the utility. So I think after this meeting, our team and Kurt and Samantha and Panoni will get together and come to a consensus regarding what's Coventry going to look like as part of this development. So I wouldn't expect necessarily the planning commission to, to make a recommendation on 12 and 13 because we hadn't identified it previously. And now that we have identified it, we're sort of still waiting to finalize our analysis on Coventry. So we're comfortable, I think, if the planning commission's comfortable and, and Gilmore and Bob are comfortable with bundling that into the conversation generally on Coventry and the widening waiver. But I did want to highlight that we are looking at the street trees in that area as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard the presentation. Any comments or questions? Bob, Sam, Kurt? Okay, any questions from the audience? Thomas? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. In regards to subdivision land development, JRZ LLC 500 Coventry Avenue, Croydon, requesting preliminary and final land development approval in order to construct two, three units, six units total, single-family attached dwellings, townhouses on the properties located at 612 Coventry Avenue, tax parcel dash number 5-008-177 and 607 Second Avenue, tax parcel number 5-008-176, Croydon. We would recommend to council to grant that subdivision land development with the following notations. That applicant is in compliance with the Gilmore and Associates letter dated April 12th, with the exception of the Tri-State Engineers and Land Surveyors, Inc. letter dated August 30th, which requested waivers. And there were a total of 12 numbers, 12 items listed on that. So we would recommend those waivers with the exception of further conversation with the township engineer and with Panoni on 177-35A, which was the cart width. And in addition from the Gilmore and Associates letter, the items pertaining to the street trees, 177-51.a.1c and 177-51.a.1f.
Perfect.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Having nothing else on our agenda, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
So moved.
Moved in seconds. Comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, and before, thank you very much for the monitoring.
I wasn't even speaking in the microphone and I want to, before we adjourn, for those in, in attendance and also our viewing audience, on behalf of our planning commission and Bob, Sam and Kurt, we want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday Season. Be safe out there. Now I entertain that motion to adjourn.
Now I'll make that motion.
I'll second it again.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.